Okay. Good evening, I'd like to call our June 16th, 2025 meeting to order. And with that, we'll say the pledge of allegiance if you'll join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Now, I'd like to invite Pastor Paul Andrews from Freedom Church to give the opening prayer.
All right. Uh, just to thank you guys for everything you did as far as the, the rains and everything, uh, and the decisions that were made, the levees worked great, so, uh, I don't know, I just want to thank you guys for all the hard work you do and some good decisions and thank God for a full lake, praise God.
Amen.
Lord, we do thank you, we come before you with praise and thanksgiving, Lord. And, uh, we give you praise for just patience, um, we thank you, Lord, for the rains that have filled the lake. Um, Lord, we, we do pray for the, the decisions that are before us. I thank you that you give every one of these servants here wisdom, Lord God, to move, to move the needle to help Augusta grow and flourish, Lord. I pray that you'd be with them, your spirit would be with them. And God, I, I pray that they would, um, know the value of what they do and they would feel appreciated. Uh, and we're thankful, Lord, for the community of Augusta, for the city that we live in, for the people that are here, and we give you praise, Lord, for this day, in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
God bless you guys.
Thank you. Yeah. With that, let's, uh, review for approval our minutes from, uh, June 9th council work session and the June 2nd city council meeting.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the June 2nd, 2025 city council meeting and June 9th, 2025 city council work session.
Second. Got a motion and a second to approve those minutes? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now, let's go down and review our appropriation ordinance number six.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move for approval of, of the appropriation order number six dated June 4th, 2025.
Second. Got a motion and a second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Brings us down to our visitor section and Mr. Clinton Warner from the Augusta Recreation Committee and, uh, Amanda Johnston from our city pool are here to make a request.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This year, we would like to go ahead and do movie night again, um, show the movie Moana, but then also add a few extra things, um, for our day. So, we're wanting to, um, incorporate a build your own boat, um, out of cardboard, and he'll talk more about that, um, and then have people race them. Um, we're wanting to do some activities outside too, out front of the, the pool, um, possibly a bounce house, I don't know if we were able to get that approved with insurance or not, we were looking into that. Um, and then maybe water volleyball, um, that's a possibility, but just kind of incorporate some different activities and stuff, um, throughout the day. We would still go ahead and open at 1:00, um, and stay open until 5:00, then we would tear it down and start building, um, our sound system and stuff like that for our movie night. Um, and Ron Rivas will be, um, helping us with that again this year, with that part, so. Um, do you have any questions for me? I think, okay, you want to explain?
Yep. Yeah, uh, I've always, when I ran the pool there, when I was at Holcomb Rec, uh, on our Fourth of July Day, we did a cardboard boat races, just a fun little, uh, activity for the kids to do and even adults. Uh, usually what we do is give out three awards, we do the Pride of the Fleet Award, which is the, uh, science and physics involved and design, uh, best innovative and unique design, the creative, and then we did the speedboat award, which is the overall winner, the fastest one to do it, or the only one to get across, depending on how it works out. Then we also do the Titanic Award, uh, which is the most dramatic sink. Uh, for that one award, I've always just given out, you know, just floaties, just a fun little, kind of a joke thing for that one, so. Always did a lifeguard on duty, uh, I got rules in, on the construction, you know, no all cardboard and duct tape, only two things allowed, no metal, uh, no other flotation device, no motors. Uh, we're going to provide the oars and the, where I've always done them, I've always let them bring their own, but I'm not, I don't come from the land of lakes like you guys do, so we're gonna not do that, so we're gonna provide the oars for that, or they can make their own, just depending on what they choose to, uh, so like I said, um, only waterproof materials, they can mark up their, uh, boats, design them how they want, but it's just all gonna be waterproof markers or anything that won't contaminate the pool, and we'll go over all that. Uh, I bring a metal detector to go over the boats, just to make sure there's no metal or anything in there as well, so, just a fun little, uh, activity to do, they're awesome to watch. We're looking at doing $15 per boat for the entry, $20 day of, and then I believe it was the, uh, attendance fee, uh, if, well, it's already gonna be open, so if they want to come watch, they gotta pay to get in. Uh, 12 and underage division, minimum of eight years old, 13 years of older for the adult, uh, vision, uh, so that's really kind of, kind of what we're talking about doing, so.
Thank you. Council, any questions for them?
No questions. Josh?
Josh?
Yeah, um, Clinton and Amanda, can you guys explain the partnership with the rec? Like exactly how does the day work and who's doing what? Um, I'd heard something about fees and all of that sort of stuff, so how is all that going to work in a partnership? Because this is one of the first times we've used a city facility in partnership with the rec, so?
Right.
How did you guys envision that?
Uh, I think we discussed doing 50/50, um, on, uh, the fees, splitting revenue 50/50 on that, uh, and then we'll do, uh, she was gonna provide some oars and the rec will buy, provide oars as well, uh, for people to use on that, and then prizes would probably come out of the registration fees that we get.
So that, when you're saying fees, that's the entry fees for those events?
Yeah.
Okay, and then how does it work for folks just coming in and out of the pool?
You, uh, those will go to the city since that's the, they're paying already for the pool to go in, we won't, the rec won't get any of those fees.
So, so I just wanted you all to, to hear that, because again, we haven't done any partnerships with the rec before, because we never had that before, so, um, at least hear that component. On the, what Amanda mentioned about insurance, no, we have not been able to work out with our broker, uh, getting coverage through EMC on the bouncy houses. I did speak with the chief, uh, when they did, uh, the movie in the, or, yeah, the movie in the park event that Public Safety was hosting, they worked with the bouncy house company, and that company actually added the city as an additional insured, and we paid a small fee to get added to their policy. And so, maybe that's an avenue, but in terms of EMC and our insurance, it, it's a risky sort of thing that they don't do and won't support. Um, but when they did it in Garvin Park, that was, that was a workaround that Public Safety found for getting it covered and having us under some insurance coverage, so I would say it's a comfort thing for you all, if you're comfortable with that event and that activity being there, then we would want to pursue that avenue, there'll be some cost to it for us to get that policy, uh, but that, that was a way that Public Safety was able to do them in the, uh, in the park, so I'll leave that up to you and how comfortable you are with that, but, um, otherwise, I think it's a great event, great opportunity to partner with the rec and, you know, start us on a, on a new path and adding some activities for our youth in town.
You said there would be some additional costs, do you have any idea what that would be?
Chief, do you happen to have any idea? So, everybody couldn't hear at home, he said 300 is what they paid for, for us, now we'd have to check, I don't know if they're using the same company or not, so maybe there's some variation in costs there, but.
I think it's worth exploring, just to, I think it's worth exploring just to bring the facts back, to have that option. Don't you?
I agree. I agree.
Yeah, so your, your issue is gonna be that this event, I think, is, is scheduled before our next council meeting, so it, it kind of came up quick and the, and this partnership, um, it kind of came up as, as well, and so we're not gonna have another meeting to bring it back to you all, once we find that out, so the, I guess the question is, is if we're able to identify a policy and do what Public Safety did for a few hundred dollars, are you comfortable with us acquiring that additional insurance policy? I wouldn't be comfortable going in with no coverage for the city, I, I do think we should, as a host of the event, I think we should have some kind of coverage. Um, but you, you could potentially look at it that way, and, and if you wanted to approve the event, you could approve it subject, uh, or you could approve it with the bouncy house component, subject to getting additional insurance coverage, and you can give us a cap, or you can, or you can say at the, at staff's discretion, um, because if it is an unreasonable number, then we would probably make that decision that it's unreasonable, or you could say that you don't want to do the bouncy houses this time and drop them off, it's up to you.
Do you guys have a bounce house vendor that you've already been talking with?
I have, yeah, um, and he was gonna cut us a deal, he was what in our business, so he'd said, uh, he would give us two for the price of one. He did request that he didn't want adults in it, um, for that purpose right there, um, but having kids and, um, giving us the extra ones, so there's not as many in one, so, um, he was gonna charge, I think it was $230 for two of them.
Do you know what his, do you know anything about their insurance coverage through that vendor?
Um, no, I do need to look into that, but I know that they are insured, um, and I can tell you the name of them, it's Big Bounce, uh, Party Supply. So, he said they are licensed, insured, and certified.
That those companies are generally required to carry a, a pretty healthy insurance policy, the only question is, is would we have the opportunity to get named as an additional insured through them, which is what the other company did for us?
What was the name of that again, Amanda?
Do it.
What was the name again, the Party Supply?
Um, let me look that up.
Sorry.
Big Bounce Party Supply.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
So, do you need a motion to approve the event overall, and then?
Yeah.
Potentially a separate or contingent emotion, or motion for the bounce house element?
I, I would think so, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, so moved to approve the event request?
Second. Got a motion and a second to approve the event. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now, the bounce house component.
So, do we want to set like a $300 limit on the insurance, or we just want to leave it at Josh's discretion?
Let's staff Josh's discretion.
Yeah, perfect. So, I'll make a motion to approve the use of the bounce house contingent or subject to being able to be named as an insured on the vendor's insurance policy.
Second. Got a motion and a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. This time, I'd call for any visitors that are here with something they want to talk about that are not already on the agenda. Okay, we'll go on then. First item of business, we're gonna allow this team here to present our final Americans with Disabilities Act's transition plan. They will introduce themselves and.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, for your time. Uh, my name is John McGovern, and I lead the accessibility practice at the WT Group, and with me is?
Hi, everyone, my name's Tatum Story, I am the principal of operations with the accessibility practice at WT Group and the project manager.
Okay, you're gonna have to speak into the mic, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
We'll split it.
Uh, my name's Tatum Story, and I was the project manager for Augusta's project with ADA, I did a lot of the access audits, and I'm the principal of operations with the accessibility practice at WT Group.
Thank you.
Can we get the PowerPoint up? Thank you, Josh. Uh, so the next page just talks a little bit about what we're gonna try to cover here. We've just introduced ourselves, we'll talk a little bit about the ADA requirements as they apply to existing sites as well as new construction, and we'll talk about the transition plan and what that is, uh, we'll talk about our process and what we did when we were here in Augusta. Uh, Tatum will walk through the deliverables, uh, we'll talk about some fiscal notes that are important to see and discuss in the transition plan, and then we'll end with some strategies and conclusion. If you have a question while we're going through it, just stop us, don't wait till the end, we'd prefer to answer them while they're hot in your head, so. The, the next slide, we can skip, we already introduced ourselves, is ADA requirements for existing sites. So, when Congress was debating the Americans with Disabilities Act, they said, look, we want to make sure that every existing facility is audited, so that's the key requirement, and that that audit result turns into a transition plan, and we'll talk a little bit more about what the transition plan is, but each city, each one of the 89,000 units of state and local government do have to audit all existing sites and do have to create this forward-looking plan that talks about what changes you're gonna make at the sites. The bottom bullet point's really important too. Congress said to cities, we want you to ask your residents who have a disability what their preferences and priorities are. Is it more important for them to be able to find accessible parking, or to have doors and restrooms be accessible, or should it be the thing that they go to that site for? Like, maybe attending the city council meeting, or going to a trail, or doing some other activity at an Augusta site? So, the, the good news is, you can kind of make some decisions here, you're not locked into a definite approach, uh, for parks and for facilities. The next slide talks a little bit about ADA Title II, so the ADA is cut up into four key parts, Title I is employment, Title II governs everything the city does regarding services, parks, public right-of-way, and facilities. In one of the areas of the ADA that's crystal clear, it is designing construction of new sites. Whenever there's a new site that's designed and constructed, it must strictly adhere to the federal requirements and any Kansas requirements that are more stringent. The audit and retrofit, uh, piece is the third bullet point, we talked a little bit about that, so I, I think I'll say that not every city has done this, so hats off to you for recognizing this, and really hats off to you for recognizing the need to evaluate your inventory of sidewalks a couple of years ago as well, so those are really important steps. When we do our work, like I said, we're looking at the federal 2010 standards for accessible design, any Augusta local code, local code, or any Kansas code, and then we also incorporate smart practices. And just to make sure that you're aware of this, the ADA's been effective since 1992, the standards have only changed once, so it's not like there's a constant race to keep up with what's new in the standards. So, they changed in 2010 from the 1991 standards, and we'll probably have this set of standards again for another 10 years or so before those are revised as well. So, the next slide talks a little bit about, more specifically, the new construction requirements, and I'll say here that we see errors in every city. This is not Augusta, it's an example from a, a far mid-Atlantic state that built a brand-new courthouse, so every courtroom should have been completely accessible, so if you're a juror, you should be able to wheel right into the jurors box. If I'm a witness and I use a wheelchair, I should be able to wheel right into the witness box. Every one of the 22 courtrooms did not allow that, so this is a $100 million new construction project. Um, so that's really embarrassing for cities, so, you know, taking your time and having specifications and doing good project management, making sure your design team understands you have to follow this, uh, are really important steps that unfortunately not every city takes. So, the next slide talks a little bit about the idea of program access. This room, in fact, will be used for something different tomorrow, right? We're gonna do training here as part of our agreement with the city, uh, for city staff. So, Congress didn't care about the four walls of the building, they want the thing that happens here to be accessible, so the program that happens here. So, whether I'm here to make public comment at a city council meeting, or I'm here to participate in training, or to hear about a new program that the city is launching, that's what's important. So, if the elevator didn't work here tonight, moving city council downstairs makes the city council meeting accessible. So, program means opportunity in the way the Department of Justice looks at this from an Americans with Disabilities Act perspective. The third bullet point is maybe a little counterintuitive, uh, but in, you know, plain language that Department of Justice says not necessarily every existing site has to be made accessible, so as long as the program or the activity that occurs there can be made accessible, then that works fine. The last bullet point's important for you, and I think I mentioned it again later, you can stretch the schedule to meet your resources. I think what we would suggest is, you know, don't take a holiday from doing ADA work, make sure that every year you are doing something, we'll be a little bit more specific about that, uh, coming up. So, the next slide talks about how the heck we did this.
Yep. All right, so, our process looked like we looked at every single city facility and park and audited it, um, from the parking lot to the inside of the building, we audited this room, we audited the bathroom here, um, in terms of what that looks like from a, of, an internal process perspective, is we use a phone system that has, uh, checklist on it, so it tells us what we're looking at. When we enter a bathroom, we open the bathroom checklist, and it has 60 questions about all the spots that are within a bathroom and what can go wrong and what can go right. Um, through that, whenever we run into a deficit or an error, we take a photo, an up-close image of the issue, as well as a far-away image of the issue, as well as GIS location coordinates, um, as well as a written as-built, so if we were in this room and this podium were too high, I'd say podium and the chambers or meeting space 45 inches from the ground, I'd have an image of it from here of my tape measure, as well as one far away, as well as the GIS coordinates, so that you can see every spot within a park and within a facility. Our tools include a door pressure gauge, so you can test how heavy it is to open and close a door, a tape measure, and then a two-foot digital level, so the images you'll see will have the exact, um, percentage of slopes for walkways and, um, accessible routes. Go on to the next one, there we go.
So, the next slide talks about what is the transition plan? Uh, again, it's designed to make the programs accessible, dispersion is a, a key part of the transition plan, you don't want to have the accessible features just be located in one part of Augusta, they should be spread around, uh, the city. Uh, there is pretty good guidance from the Department of Justice about how to treat unique sites, if there is only a one-of-a-kind site, it's hard to move that program somewhere else, so typically, a unique site is gonna be a higher priority in our recommendations to you. And I talked about the phasing, you know, stretched out over how many years? Uh, the longest we've ever seen a transition plan stretch is 24 years, and that was for a 300,000 population suburb of Phoenix. So, usually, they're gonna be somewhere between 12 to 15 years, again with, you know, hopefully continual work every year. Um, a little bit more on the next slide talks about some transition plan factors, I think it's important that the plan identify the physical obstacle, so the example Tatum gave of something that's too high, we're gonna cite that and we're gonna show you everything that we call an access deficit, then we're gonna tell you what to do to make that accessible, uh, then we're gonna tell you who's the responsible official, uh, that's one of the requirements for the transition plan, and then we're gonna suggest a phase or a period of time in which, by which the work has to be accomplished. The Department of Justice does not require cost references, but we know that no city can make a plan like this without having an idea of how much it costs, so we do use cost references, we use RS means, RS means has not developed their, or redone their accessibility tool since 2004, so instead, we look at how much the cost of construction has increased in this part of Kansas, and we use that as a multiplier for the RS means number, so that we're giving you a, a good placeholder number. The next slide talks a little bit about the right-of-way priorities, do you want to talk about this one?
Yeah, so as John mentioned, we looked at the data that the city collected in 2023 and 2024 regarding the 20-ish miles of sidewalk, um, and Title II is very specific as to how to prioritize sidewalk whenever you're making retrofits. Uh, Priority One should be government facilities, so think parks and the schools and, um, any government entities, if there were bus stops, those types of places. Priority Two should be places of public accommodation, so think of, um, 7th Street over there, that's a, a big spot for public accommodation. Priority Three is places of employment, so think factories, industrial road, um, those types of areas within Augusta, and then Priority Four is just other, um, this area consists of residential areas and neighborhoods, um, as well as places of worship and private clubs, like the country club. Next slide.
Is back to deliverables.
So, some of the deliverables that came or come with this project are the 22 access audit site reports, site reports have all the detail in them, so the city hall and utility office site report has, it's broken up by every single room in the space, it has tons and tons of findings and photos, um, and it's really where you get your detail. Uh, the transition plan and pivot tables, where you're gonna get the big picture, look at everything, I think it'll be really helpful for all of you, uh, as well as the pivot table having that cost reference piece, it also is where you can see the phasing, and so with phasing, we looked at low-hanging fruit, stuff that's gonna be $0 or low cost to fix in Phase One, um, as well as, um, stuff that, um, is, Phase One is more so the low-hanging fruit and stuff that, um, is new construction that was done incorrectly that needs to be taken care of first. Phase Two is gonna be stuff that's new to the standards in the 2010 standards versus the previous standards Sean mentioned before, so that's gonna be like playgrounds, um, sports fields and courts, things like that. Phase Three is typically, um, employee spaces, so it has that later phase, or stuff that's complex or costly. We also offer an option phase, so it's kind of the area where the city gets to decide if they want to leave something as-is because they're already meeting program access or not, or if they want to, uh, you know, reach for the stars and make sure everything's accessible. And then the fifth phase is smart practice, so that's the stuff that we've seen across the country that is maybe a good idea to consider, it's stuff that is advisory in the standards as well, so it's just some considerations for the city to look through. I'm sure we'll talk about that in a, a couple more slides, but that's a quick glimpse at that. The final report covers all of the things I just described, so that you kind of get a reference to how the site reports and the transition plan work together. Um, the public right-of-way priority report is a piece that looks at all of the sidewalks that were audited, and it explains, uh, which areas within Augusta should be taken care of or prioritized first versus second, third, and fourth, uh, and then the community engagement and staff training pieces. So, the community engagement, we did a survey, and there's a survey report and survey, um, raw data that you can look at that kind of looks at what the community had to say about how they wanted things prioritized, and how we utilized that to make our prioritization. And then the staff training's happening tomorrow, and there's gonna be a training on infrastructure and a training on reasonable modifications for, um, you know, the people who look at invitations or inviting, um, receiving, inviting, and fulfilling requests for modifications.
Got a quick question for you?
Yes.
Where did you get the sample of people out of the community that you spoke to, where, how did you come about getting them?
That's a good question. So, we, um, surveyed people, there was a survey that was generated and provided through a bunch of different means, through, um, online options, if we ran into someone in the public, we'd let them know that there was gonna be a survey, um, for people. We also reached out to advocacy groups in the area, um, and invited them to in-person sessions, so we held a morning session and an evening session, uh, where we went through what the ADA requires, we talked about what program access looks like, which is a really key piece for the public to understand that not necessarily everything needs to be made accessible, and you need to work on prioritization and phasing things, um, and so we had good feedback for both the survey and for the in-person sessions, but it was mostly through, um, with assistance with Kami to, to promote and implement.
Yeah, we put postings on our Facebook site, um, we had something on the city website, and then we also sent out mailers.
How many, how many samples did you get back?
We had 59 responses to the survey, um, and in the, in the meeting, we had about 10 in the, in the morning meeting and maybe- meeting and maybe four or five in the second meeting.
Thank you. And that may not sound like a huge number, but it's, especially post-COVID, we often find the in-person community engagement meetings will have no attendees. People... Let me phrase it this way. The city's not taking something away, so that may draw a bigger crowd. Instead, you're asking your residents for advice, and they may think, hey, I can do that through a survey. I don't need to go to the meeting. So it's pretty common for us to see relatively small numbers, and your numbers were much bigger than we thought we'd see. A couple of fiscal notes. Don't be frightened by the numbers here. Tatum described the phases. So Phase One is low-hanging fruit, and then things that were new construction that are off a bit, so that's at right around $1 million. Phase Two is right around $900,000. That's things that are new to the design standards, like playgrounds and sports fields and some park assets. And then Phase Three tends to be more complex or costly areas, and so that's a little over $3,000, and that does include trails. The option are, again, a little over $3 million. Smart practices hover just a little bit over $250,000. So for Phases One through Three, you've got a total of roughly 3,000... I'm sorry, 3 million. I've said 3,000 twice. I'm trying to convince you it's 3,000.
I like the 3,000.
You like that better. You've got roughly 3 million, and then total, if you consider everything, which we think you don't need to do, is a little over 6. On the next slide, we talk a little bit about some strategies here. It appears like you have a pretty good relationship with different disability advocacy groups, and I think that's really important. You want your resident to have a disability to work with you, and I think everybody's aware of the demographic wave that is hitting all of the states. I'm certainly aware of it myself. By 2030, there'll be more people older than 65 than under 18 for the first time in American history. So why is that important from an ADA perspective? The incidence of disability for all of us together is somewhere around 14%. For people over 65, it's a whopping 45%. So that's a planning cycle away. So we want to make sure that, you know, you realize that the ADA is important for today, but it's really important in 2029 and 2030. I talked earlier about every year, making sure you budget and expend funds toward the transition plan that shows that you're acting in good faith. This has gotten cities, large and small, in trouble because they'll refuse to spend the money that they've already budgeted for accessibility retrofits. So, you know, keep it as something that you are making sure you do. I think brag about your work is really important, too. The July 5 event sounds like a great opportunity to make sure that people with disabilities can participate in that, too. You do have some assets that are accessible, you know, so highlight those. Make a monthly post on the webpage or in utility bills. Add something about your plans to make retrofits at a site. So, you know, make your public aware that you are doing this, and I think last but at least exceed the minimum requirements. Almost every jurisdiction that we go to that thinks of themselves as having an older population, they talk about, we need more accessible parking at the senior center or at City Hall. And our answer is just go ahead and do it. You can always exceed the minimum requirements. If you're only required to have two accessible stalls, add a third one if you have that kind of a demand from your public. The next slide just talks about what's next, accepting the report and directing staff to implement the recommendations. Be sure to annually budget. I think I've said that three times now, so I won't say it again. And then staff continues implementation. It was a pleasure to work with Kami and Josh. Whenever we had a question, we got an answer right away, and it's obvious that they're really committed to your vision of serving all the residents of Augusta, including people who have a disability. So we really appreciated that. And can we answer other questions?
Anybody? Nope. I don't think so. We've seen that we need to read thousands of pages of reports, so... Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much. Kami, thank you very much. Josh, thank you.
Well, counsel, I believe we need to...
Make a motion to...
Receive the report.
Yes. I would make the motion to receive the ADA transition report.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to receive the ADA transition report. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Let's move to Item Two, Engineering Services Agreement with JEO Consulting Group for the Santa Fe Lake weir study. And Riley, is your last name Schmidt? Schmidt. Glad you're here. Introduce yourself and your report.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Riley Schmitz with JEO Consulting Group out of Wichita here. Tonight, I bring before you an agreement for a concept study for the weir out at Santa Fe Lake. The current weir does not meet the requirements for safety as defined by the state. So this study would be to, number one, collect topographic survey, run through a study to determine a weir structure, whether it's labyrinth or other type, to meet the requirements of the state. It would also look at two points around the lake that sit lower than the existing weir to try to determine if there's any solutions to solve that issue. And then also, the state has asked for an analysis of the tower drainage structure and the pipes exiting that, concerns about leakage and impacts that they may cause to the existing dam. So that's what we've got here tonight. I don't know, Josh, have you had anything to this?
Yeah, Mayor and Counsel, we actually, we talked about this project and this proposal that would be coming to you a little bit in our work session, and Brad Shores was here, and we walked you through some of that background, just so the public can hear some of that that they may have missed from that meeting. This is a project that we've needed to do for a long time and has kind of been start and stop over the years, working with the state on it. We've had multiple engineers work on it, and when JEO first hired on, one of the things we had asked them to do was, you know, kind of help us figure out where we stood with the state on this process for that weir, and see where we left off with the prior engineer, and then let's figure out how do we get it over the hump and finally get to the point of agreement on the proposed solutions. And this is what JEO was able to come up with after talking with the state, seeing what was done, what they still had questions on. And one of the things that came up during that discussion, because I think we've been pretty resolved in the past about what our potential options were for solving the problem. And the problem that's out there is twofold. You have the sheer, just the condition of the OG weir that's in poor condition, but then you have the challenge of design. And that dam existed long before a lot of these requirements existed. And under a lot of modern requirements, you have issues like freeboard, which is basically during a certain type of high rain event, how high does the water get on the dam and how much earth do you have above that? Like those gaps, those matter, and there are standards out there that say you are supposed to have X amount of freeboard. The studies that we've had done to this point say that we don't. So then the question is not just resolving the condition problem, but then also analyzing how do we deal with those standards that have been designed or been set after this dam was constructed, honestly. And so this study will help us resolve the rest of that, hopefully get us to a solution, and we can explore different options. I know we had talked about different things over the years, whether it was lowering the OG weir, reconstructing in place. One of the ideas that came up in the most recent interactions with JEO was the idea of building another labyrinth-type weir like we have at City Lake, so that's part of this analysis as well. So the end goal out of this is to actually know what our solution is and to be able to start moving forward. Our previous engineer got us part of the way, but to get us over the hump with the state, we need to do this additional work. So that's background for the public that wasn't able to attend our budget work session meeting this past week.
Should probably note, too, this is just a study phase at this point. So this could lead to another design phase and another phase for either a conditional letter of map revision and follow-up with another lap, letter of map revision to finalize it out. So this is just the study phase at this point.
So the, and the last part of that is sort of next steps, as Riley was indicating there. Once we get this study done and we can get some sort of agreement of the solutions, then we have the opportunity to start working towards that design, but also to start working towards funding options. So in the past, we had worked with you all and taken our shot at different grant opportunities that were available through the state, but where those always fell short wasn't necessarily on the quality of the project or how it would rain compared to other things. It was the fact that your project presents better for those grant opportunities if you actually have a solution and you have your design done and are ready to move it forward. So this is a step, and then if we can move it forward and get our solution, get to design, then we actually have an opportunity to go after some grant funding that may be helpful in getting that project done.
Any other questions?
I don't have any questions. I know this is something we've needed to do for a long time and to look at. We need to get this resolved. So Mr. Mayor, I'm going to make a motion to approve the Engineering Services Agreement with JEO Consulting Group Incorporated for Santa Fe Lake Wer Study and Authorized City Manager, Ash Shaw, to sign the same.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any other questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Riley.
Thank you.
Item Three, the Housing Study and Needs Assessment Update. Staff?
Yeah, give me one second, Mayor. As I was going to try to show something to the public, if I can find it.
And sorry, this is still on the last item, just so people can get the visual of what So when the previous item was the OG weir, this is the OG weir structure out at Santa Fe Lake. This is supposed to be a concrete, consistent concrete wall all the way across, and you can see the condition. So this is the spillway at Santa Fe Lake. The OG weir is the structure. So at City Lake, it's called a labyrinth weir. This is called OG. That's just how it's constructed, but this is the structure that we were talking about in the previous item for anyone at home that has no idea what that language meant. Sorry, I just wanted to share that real quick.
Josh, real quick, any idea, is that original to when the lake was originally created?
I don't think so, actually. You can only see it, I think, when the water is low, but I think that there's actually another structure out here further in front. I think it's been rebuilt at least once.
Got it.
Maybe more than that, but I think that when the water's down low enough, you can see the old remnants of a foundation for an OG weir here, and I think they just built another one behind it. I can't tell you when that happened, though. All right, my apologies for that.
And that was probably done as Santa Fe Railroad owned it, not as the city.
Yeah, and I can't remember the year that that lake opened, but it's many, many, many decades ago.
It's in the '30s.
So opened in the '30s, so maybe somewhere 30, 40 years after that, they may have done a rebuild on that OG weir, so we're long overdue from there. All right, Mayor and Counsel, the next item is the Housing Study and Needs Assessment. If you remember back in 2020, we actually did a comprehensive housing study and needs assessment for the city. This was a requirement that we had for the grant programs and for the incentive tools that we were looking at with the state when we went after moderate income housing grant, when we were looking at the rural housing incentive district grants. One of the things in order to qualify for those programs is that you have a housing needs assessment. Like many assessments and studies that you have, those are only valid for a certain period of time, and our timeline has run out. And so we do have other projects that are either active or in the works or that we'll have opportunities for that are going to be asking for us to pursue these sort of grants, these sort of incentive districts again. And so we need to make sure that our study stays updated, so that when we go to apply for those things, we don't have an obstacle holding us back that hurts our application. So Kami's staff did reach out to the same company that did our original study and asked for a price to do an update, and that's what you have here tonight. And what was that price? $4,000 for the update. And we were just planning on absorbing that in our professional services line item budget, but once that's done, then we'll have a valid study for the next four or five years to use for any of those grant programs or incentive districts, things that we're looking at that may come with future development projects. So with that, I'll turn it over to staff, or sorry, to Counsel for any consideration and questions.
I'd accept the motion.
All right.
But you would.
Mayor, make a motion to approve the... Well, let's see. Consider approval of Canyon Research Southwest Professional Services contract and authorize city manager to sign. So moved.
Got a motion and a second. Any questions?
Yeah, wait, that's right. This is not in the 25 budget, the dollars or...
The specific project was not, but we're just absorbing it in one of our line items for professional services, which is where we contract out for different services.
Not going to mess up our budget.
No. It's a relatively small expense.
Okay.
Yeah.
So Josh, from a, just a curiosity, this is an update to the existing plan, so they don't have to start from square one. They can take what they've done, look at current data, current demographics, and update it, correct?
Yes, this is just an update off of the current plan, but also there hasn't been a lot of movement in the housing stock in Augusta since the plan was made in 2020, so we didn't see the need of revising the whole entire plan. A lot of the new home builds that we've had, I mean, with the exception of Shadow Ridge right now, which I think is adding the most housing stock Augusta's seen in a while, a lot of the new homes are, someone's come in and tore down a dilapidated home, and they're rebuilding in the same footprint, which really isn't adding to the housing stock. So we felt comfortable just moving forward with an update, and it'll, we'll be able to get through that a lot faster as well.
Thanks.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all. Item Four, replacement, purchase of a replacement airport tug. Staff?
Yes, Mayor and Counsel, this item was also discussed with you at the budget work session in detail to kind of walk you through where we're coming from. We have a tenant that was able to gain access to a couple of used tugs that are much less used than the current tug that we are using to operate, that we actually purchased as a used piece of equipment. And that tenant was kind enough to let us look at that equipment and offered one of those to us and actually bought two of them with the intent of us hopefully being able to use the second one. So we discussed it at the budget work session, said that we were planning on asking or recommending in one of our upcoming budgets that we acquire something like this. We just... that we acquire something like this. We just happen to have an opportunity right now. So if you're willing, we did have this discussion, seemed like everybody was comfortable at the time, but you have to take official action. So this is a meeting where you can take action to authorize us to make that purchase. So with that, I'll turn it over to council.
Mayor, make a motion to approve the purchase of replacement airport tug in the amount of five thousand dollars authorized city manager Josh Shaw to execute any necessary documents to complete the transaction.
Second. Got a motion and a second. Any other questions?
No, just, I, I just have a comment. I would say pass our gratitude along to the tenant that shared the opportunity with us.
Definitely will.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, item five, purchase of replacement mowers for the Parks Department, which we also discussed earlier. So staff?
So for clarity, this one actually hasn't come to you yet. It is coming in the work session that, that you haven't had in a couple of weeks yet. But as a matter of backstory, this is the mower unit that we talked to you about last year. It's the mower unit that we ended up buying and using at the airport and letting you know that Parks was going to be asking in their upcoming budget to be acquiring something similar. What's happened here in the last couple of months, though, is that we are having continuous downtime problems with the Range Wing Toros, which are, they're our workhorses for mowing large areas in the park system. And it's getting to the point where one of them is down more than its operational, and that's creating a lot of drag on the efficiency of us getting our, getting all of our public parks and properties maintained. We've adapted and started using these mowers on the levee as well, and the fact that one of them is consistently getting worked on is problematic, and it's slowing us down. So there's that component of it. And then the second component in talking with the vendors, basically what happened is our staff was getting estimates so that we could include numbers in your 2026 budget, which we're gonna be discussing at the next work session. They have units available right now that you can get 10% cheaper if you buy them now. So it's actually a similar sort of opportunity to what happened with the solid waste truck that you all authorized that we were planning on budgeting for next year, but if you actually wait for January first, you pay 10 or 15% more. We have a chance now, if you're willing to authorize it. It was not budgeted for this year. It was gonna be asked for next year, but if you're willing to authorize it, we can save a little over 10 or 12% on the purchase cost and get them for the, the 27,000. If we wait till after the first, they're going up over 30. So staff at least wanted to give you a chance to do that. If you would rather wait and go through the budget process, you can. That's just what the vendors were telling us, that if you wait till next year, that price is going up at least 10%. So we wanted to give you the opportunity to consider the option.
I know where I heard it. I talked to Frank the other day, and he was telling me about it. I'm sorry. That's why I knew about it.
Josh, on the, the bat wing mowers, ones that keep breaking down, do we have a lease on those, or do we purchase those?
Uh, we bought, God, when did we bought that? I think they were part of the flood purchase, maybe, or maybe the slope mower was.
The slope.
May have just been the slope mower.
We've purchased those at two different times, and so the, it's the oldest one that's broken.
So we, we have one that was probably bought in the early 2010s, and then one that we added to the fleet later. And, and you were indicating you think it's the oldest one.
Thanks.
So the oldest one, I think we have had up in Kansas City multiple times just this year, trying to get it fixed. So we get it back, we'll have it for a little while, goes right back to Kansas City. And those units are complicated to work on. They're expensive. When we bought them new, I think they were $60,000 pieces of equipment. So the things that we're looking to move to are a fraction of that cost, and we're hoping that the ease of maintenance and upkeep with, with the hustlers that we're looking at compared to the Range Wings, which we gotta send up to Kansas City, we're, we're hoping to have a better experience with that. So that, that, that's the situation now, is the other one has gotten so bad that our, our multiple mechanics here have looked at it, and then it ends up getting shipped off to Kansas City to get worked on. And so our guys are just trying to figure out what they can down one of their major pieces of equipment a lot of the, a lot of the year. And so we at least wanted to ask, and because of the pricing thing that's happening with the equipment after the first of the year, one staff brought it to me, I was like, let me just take it to council. And, and I believe the company happens to have this one now. So it's an opportunity. You don't have to act on it, but we at least wanted to get in front of you if you felt comfortable with it, because we were planning on asking for it in the 2026 budget. And so if you do fund it now, we won't have that ask in the 2026 budget. So we'll just take that out of our asks.
Josh, is the vision with the Range Wing to eventually get rid of that once this one would be purchased to where?
The, the older one, that, that would be a goal, if we could get that traded in and try to get some value back out of it, and we could reimburse the fund. So I believe that, I was recommending that we pay for this out of Special Parks Fund.
Yeah.
And so if we get any value back out of that other mower, that revenue would just go back into Special Parks. When staff looked at this, at our 2025 budget, we had $10,000 allocated for a zero turn radius mower. We were planning on replacing a smaller unit, but what we suggested to try to minimize the impact on the budget is use that 10,000 we were planning to use on a small ZTR by the big ZTR. And so what you're actually considering that's different from what you budgeted is the 17,000 in Special Parks. If you're able to sell the Range Wing, you'll get some of that back, but, but we don't know what price that'll go for at best, maybe a few thousand dollars.
Yeah.
So the 17,000 is the question mark or the wild card. You already had the 10 budgeted for a mower, so we're not asking for more than we would have before, just a unit that's more expensive. We would absorb it in Special Parks and then reduce our ask in the 2026 budget.
Josh, how's the, how is the other unit doing? How's the other lawnmower doing?
Out at the airport?
This one here, you said, one of, yeah, you had, we bought two of them, one of them later. How's the other one?
Um, I, I think as soon as they can transition away from them, they will. It is not in the same condition as this other unit in terms of the downtime, so they're gonna continue to use it as long as they can. They were, I don't think they were asking to replace it next year. I think it's still a couple of budgets out, but it will come up eventually. They will probably recommend moving away from them completely. We're just gonna ride it out for a few more years until it gets bad, I think.
Is, is that something they could ask, ask the question, though? I mean, is that something, if we buy two of them, you know, are at a point that we could get one, get it cheaper, or can we, you know, could we get more for that one? You know, was, you know, now because it's not, because it's not where it's at a shape, you know, bad shape and stuff where we could replace it next year?
Yeah, they, they could always ask. I, I just don't have an answer for what, what the vendor would say, but they can ask. We didn't ask that question.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's just worth to ask and see what, just, just in case.
We're kind of on a time constraint, though. If we don't get this one.
Right, we can get this one, but.
Pretty quick.
Yeah, they, they have, they have this one, and so it would give us a unit I think that we could use for this moment season. And that's why, that's why I told staff, hey, at least let me make the ask of council and see what they say.
Counsel? In the Toros, I'm pretty sure Frank told me a new Toro Range Wing was over $90,000, so.
Yeah, they, they've continued go, going up in price, and I, I think the, the conclusion we've come to, they've been great mowers. Like when they work, they're great mowers and, and had a pretty good quality product. I think our conclusion was that maybe they're better on a golf course than, than some of the, the heavier, rough terrain and stuff that we have to use them on, and maybe that's contributed to their longevity for us. So that's, after the decade or so that we've had them, that's one of the conclusions I think we've drawn from using them. So I don't want to bash the product at all. It's, it's been good when they work.
Mayor, make a motion to approve the purchase of a Hustler Super 104 Vanguard EFI 40 horsepower mower from All Elements Auto and Marine at the cost of 27,533.65, and authorize city manager Josh Shaw to execute any necessary documents to complete that transaction.
Second. Got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. That's the end of the business section, so we're back to matters from and for council. So Josh, it says you have something you want to talk about?
Yeah, I, I asked council in previous meetings if you'd be willing to hold some calendar dates open for me. That was the off Mondays in June for us to, to try to schedule and wrap up our work sessions. We still have the tax-supported funds to do. We just got our information from the county, so I'm ready to start putting together the materials for that work session. And just to give me a little bit more time than I had for the last one, I was targeting the June 30th Monday, if you're available then. That would work best for staff.
Works for me.
Works for me. Does not work for me. What about next Monday?
I don't care.
The 23rd?
Mike, does it work for you? Mike Martin?
The 30th?
Yeah. Do it every Monday. I don't care.
Josh, would the 23rd work?
It would be tough, because I, I'm still working on materials and finishing up meetings. I can try my best. I think the, the quality of the product would be lower on the 23rd. How many more do we have after this 30th one? How many more meetings? Your best guess?
One to two.
Okay. Yeah, so, so what, just anybody listening to how this process works, normally what we'll start with, we'll do our, our trends meeting. We've actually kind of fallen into a standardized process the last few years. So we start with a trends meeting, just kind of sets you up for what's going on in the world that will impact your budget. Then we start with our enterprise funds, and then we knock out some of the special purpose funds, and then move into tax support. A tax support, it always comes later because we don't get data from the county till the middle of this month. We just got it in the last day or two. So now I have to go back through all the tax-supported funds. So we'll finish with tax-supported funds, and then we'll have a session where we do our capital improvement projects and the, and the adjustment, the budget adjustment list. That's where you get to go back and review all of the city manager's recommendations, take out line item by line item what you want, or leave in, or add. And then from there, we schedule our hearings for the public to, to participate and see what they think at that point. But all of the work sessions are open to the public as well. 30th works for me, but doesn't for Kip, right?
Right. Well, let's set it for the 30th and see what happens.
Okay.
Hopefully we get five, five of us here.
I'll, I'll check with the ones that aren't in attendance tonight and verify if that works. And if it doesn't, then we'll go through the special meeting scheduling process and reach out to you guys again, see if we can find a date, and then we'll do it that way.
Thanks, Josh.
We'll initially start with the 30th and see how it goes for everybody.
Okay, sounds good. Mr. Martin, you got anything extra tonight?
Can we get a motion?
Oh.
Make a motion to schedule budget work session number four for Monday, June 30th, 2025 at 6:00 PM in city council chambers.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So Mr. Martin, you got anything tonight?
Yes, there's a.
Talk into the mic, because people at home can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, I can.
Okay. There's a couple of really nice potholes developing on the overpass, on the north lane of the westbound traffic, or this, not the inside lane, but the outside lane, really big one. And I've been watching it now, I avoid it, but it's getting bigger. There's one on the interior lane as well, on over the overpass, or almost to the middle of the, top of the overpass. That's all I have.
Okay. Mr. Scott?
And I've talked to Kami. We've got something on Clark Street I want to follow up with you, but right now it's not the time. But we'll do it off the record. Thank you.
Okay.
I don't have anything. Thank you.
Nothing tonight.
Nothing. Okay.
Mayor, I move to go into executive session for 40 minutes to discuss issues related to potential litigation against the city pursuant to the consultation with an attorney for the public body or agency which be privileged in the attorney-client relationship justification for executive sessions under the Kansas Open Meetings Act, KSA 75-4319B2, and inviting city manager Josh Shaw, assistant city manager Kami Shro, building inspector Travis Combs, and city attorney Andrew Marino. The open meeting of the governing body will reconvene in city council chambers at 8:47 PM.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll be back in 40 minutes, roughly.
All right. Mr. Mayor, make a motion to exit executive session where no action was taken.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to exit executive session where no action was taken. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I move to go into executive session for an additional 15 minutes to discuss issues related to potential litigation against the city pursuant to the consultation with an attorney for the public body or agency which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship. Justification for executive sessions under the Kansas Open Meetings Act (KSA) 754319B2 and to invite City Manager Judge Shaw, Assistant City Manager Cammy Shro, Building Inspector Travis Combs, and City Attorney Andrew Marino. The open meeting of the governing body will reconvene in the city council chambers at 9:03.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to go into executive session. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The open meeting of the governing body will reconvene in the city council chambers at 9:03.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to go into executive session. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I move to go into executive session for an additional 15 minutes to discuss issues related to potential litigation against the city pursuant to the consultation with an attorney for the public body or agency which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship. Justification for executive sessions under the Kansas Open Meetings Act, KSA 754319B2, and to invite City Manager Josh Shaw, Assistant City Manager Kami Shro, Building Inspector Travis Cooms, and City Attorney Andrew Moreno. The open meeting of the governing body will reconvene in the city council chambers at 9:03.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to go into executive session. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I move to go into executive session for an additional 15 minutes to discuss issues related to potential litigation against the city pursuant to the consultation with an attorney for the public body or agency which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship. Justification for executive sessions under the Kansas Open Meetings Act, KSA 754319B2, and to invite City Manager Josh Shaw, Assistant City Manager Kami Shro, Building Inspector Travis Cooms, and City Attorney Andrew Moreno. The open meeting of the governing body will reconvene in the city council chambers at 9:03.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to go into executive session. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I move to go into executive session for an additional 15 minutes to discuss issues related to potential litigation against the city pursuant to the consultation with an attorney for the public body or agency which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship. Justification for executive sessions under the Kansas Open Meetings Act, KSA 754319B2, and to invite City Manager Josh Shaw, Assistant City Manager Kami Shro, Building Inspector Travis Cooms, and City Attorney Andrew Moreno. The open meeting of the governing body will reconvene in the city council chambers at 9:03.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to go into executive session. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I move to go into executive session for an additional 15 minutes to discuss issues related to potential litigation against the city pursuant to the consultation with an attorney for the public body or agency which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship. Justification for executive sessions under the Kansas Open Meetings Act, KSA 754319B2, and to invite City Manager Josh Shaw, Assistant City Manager Kami Shro, Building Inspector Travis Cooms, and City Attorney Andrew Moreno. The open meeting of the governing body will reconvene in the city council chambers at 9:03.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to go into executive session. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I move to go into executive session for an additional 15 minutes to discuss issues related to potential litigation against the city pursuant to the consultation with an attorney for the public body or agency which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship. Justification for executive sessions under the Kansas Open Meetings Act, KSA 754319B2, and to invite City Manager Josh Shaw, Assistant City Manager Kami Shro, Building Inspector Travis Cooms, and City Attorney Andrew Moreno. The open meeting of the governing body will reconvene in the city council chambers at 9:03.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to go into executive session. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I move to go into executive session for an additional 15 minutes to discuss issues related to potential litigation against the city pursuant to the consultation with an attorney for the public body or agency which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship. Justification for executive sessions under the Kansas Open Meetings Act, KSA 754319B2, and to invite City Manager Josh Shaw, Assistant City Manager Kami Shro, Building Inspector Travis Cooms, and City Attorney Andrew Moreno. The open meeting of the governing body will reconvene in the city council chambers at 9:03.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to go into executive session. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I move to go into executive session for an additional 15 minutes to discuss issues related to potential litigation against the city pursuant to the consultation with an attorney for the public body or agency which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship. Justification for executive sessions under the Kansas Open Meetings Act, KSA 754319B2, and to invite City Manager Josh Shaw, Assistant City Manager Kami Shro, Building Inspector Travis Cooms, and City Attorney Andrew Moreno. The open meeting of the governing body will reconvene in the city council chambers at 9:03.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to go into executive session. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. See you all later.